I just want to be sure that everybody is sitting where they need to sit. If you are a Lebanon resident and you checked in with your clerks, I hope that you've done that, please be sitting in this column over here. Where's your hand? Lebanon, oh, there we go. If you're in North Berwick, you're going to be sitting right down here. Please make sure you do have your cards and you checked in with your clerks. And the same for Burwick over here. It's going to take us a little bit more tonight to make sure we count our votes easily, so please be patient with us as we go through the process. And I think we're pretty much ready to get started. So Elba, why don't we begin?
Okay, welcome to the MSAD sixty, the school year budget hearing. I'm Audrey Bovay, superintendent of schools. The purpose of this evening is to present, discuss, and ultimately approve the school district budget articles in preparation for the district referendum vote on June eleventh, twenty twenty-four. In a moment, we will call to elect a moderator for this evening, but before we do that, I'd like to provide a broad overview of the development of the budget process. The budget development process is very comprehensive in nature. The first portion of that process begins in early fall with administrators and directors working to build school-based and department-based budgets. This part of the process takes time and as student enrollment, facilities, supply needs are taken into consideration and compiled as part of the larger budget. Simultaneously to this step, the district-based administrators work on most portions of the budget that are district-oriented, such as tuition to Sanford Regional Technical Center, fuel and energy rates, insurance rates, overall facility needs, and staffing, as a few examples. From this work, the full budget is compiled and brought forward to the board of directors for their consideration. Each school and department of the budget is presented to the board and discussed in detail as part of that process. For those of you who were in the audience at the budget workshops and meetings, you were able to witness the level of detailed questioning and consideration that went into the final budget which is being presented this evening. Please note that the board of directors worked very hard to bring forward a budget that not only addresses student learning and needs, but also is responsible to the taxpayers of our three communities. This was not an easy task, and ultimately what is presented to the community this evening is a collaboration between building and department-based leaders, district leaders, and board members. This means that while hard decisions were made throughout the last several months, they are decisions that again address student learning and support and are responsible to our taxpayers. In conclusion, the overall proposed budget is forty-nine million, one thousand, seven hundred ninety-seven, which is a six, um, seven point four eight percent impact to taxpayers. Now we'll move on to the first order of our business, and that's to call the election of a moderator. May we have a motion? In a second? Thank you. Um, for, let's see, any nominations?
Nominate Jeff Day.
Thank you. Okay. All those in favor of Jeff Day, please, uh, hold up a voter.
Question.
What if anyone else wants to vote? Thank you. Any discussion?
I'd also like to nominate Robert.
Okay. Any other discussion?
Wait a second on the nomination.
Okay, so we have two nominations, one for Jeff Day and one for Robert Travers. So we will, um, have a vote. This part could take a little while, as you mentioned, so we're going to, um, for those in favor of Jeff Day, please hold up a card. For those who favor Robert Travers?
All right. Uh, it is in favor of Mr. Day.
Okay. Mr. Day, would you please come forward?
Good evening.
Good evening.
I just need to, um, to do a vote of the moderator. So just repeat after me, please. Aye.
Aye. Jeff Day.
Insolently swear.
Insolently swear.
That I will faithfully and impartially discharge the duties.
That I will faithfully and impartially discharge the duties.
Of moderator.
Of moderator.
At the district budget meeting to investigate.
At the district budget meeting to investigate.
Do you mind signing?
I do. Good evening. So, um, as we all know, my name is Jeff Day, and it's my pleasure to, um, serve, serve you tonight. Uh, the moderator for this meeting. Just a few, um, things before we get going. I'll be using the main moderator's manual, the twenty twenty-one addition with following modifications. Uh, members of the MSAD sixty administrative team who are not, um, registered voters, the district will be allowed to speak, to, uh, address questions and provide information to the meeting. All registered voters in their towns may participate and vote. Questions should be directed to the moderator. When asking a question, please state your name and your town, so we know where you're from. And we have, uh, microphones. I guess we're going to have people run up in runners. Yeah, so if, so you will be the runner. You will come down. Little did you know. Um, in order to ensure everyone has an opportunity to ask questions, uh, please do not repeat the question. Allow others to have an opportunity to speak. Uh, I'll allow two questions from an individual, and then we'll need to ensure someone else has an opportunity. And, uh, please do not interrupt, um, those who are speaking. And questions should be, uh, specific to the current article being addressed. To minimize confusion, there will be no amendments to, uh, an amendment. We'll address the amendment, and if it passes, fine. If it doesn't pass, fine. We're going to amend an amendment. And if you feel there's been adequate discussion and answers provided, we may move the question. Residents will have received your voter cards. Everyone's done that, so please use them when voting. And also note that Article number thirteen will be a written outline. If we keep these general guidelines in mind, I'm sure we'll have a productive evening. If there are no concerns, we will begin the review, discussion, and voting on each article. Audrey, would you like to, um, make any more additional comments? Okay. All right, we're going to read each article, and then, uh, we will, uh, get into discussion. Article number one, to see what sum the district will be authorized to expend for regular construction. School Board recommends nineteen million, two hundred and five thousand, five hundred and twenty-eight dollars. Do I hear a motion?
I, um, motion that we move the recommendations of the school board.
Have motion. Go ahead, second. Second, discussion, please.
Hello, I'm John Van Hall, um, from North Berwick. Um, I'd like to propose an amendment to Article one, regular instruction. Um, in the amount of three hundred thousand dollars, um, from nineteen million, two hundred and five thousand, five hundred and twenty-eight dollars to nineteen, uh, five thousand, five thousand, um, five hundred and twenty-eight dollars, with the intent, and knowing that the school board and board directors, um, superintendents, uh, can spend that money in any way that they would like, um, I am making an amendment with this public intent that we, um, restore.
Hold up a voter. There needs to be a second for discussion.
There's been a second, all right. Can I begin? Please, yes. Uh, with the intent of restoring one-cut, um, art teacher, um, one-cut PD teacher, and one-cut library, um, teacher, and one-cut scene teacher, as well as one world language teacher to be restored at the high school, and those other four teachers to be restored at North Berwick Elementary and, um, uh, Noel School. Thank you. And just so that everyone, um, was following along, uh, there is, uh, it's, it's the role of the board of directors to determine how, uh, the money is spent. So, um, if the money gets added back in based on, if the motion passes, the three hundred thousand, uh, the school board will make a determination as to how that money is actually spent. Yes, and, uh, and hopefully everybody heard the, the intent of, or the request as to how that money would be spent.
Can I receive?
Please.
So, uh, the, the motion is to, um, restore, um, a phys ed teacher, a, um, art teacher, a library, um, teacher, and a scene teacher to the Aaron L. Knowlton, um, Burwick School and the, um, North Berwick Elementary School, as well as one world language teacher to, um, Noble High School that was cut in this proposed amendment. Thank you.
Any more discussion? It looks like you were very succinct and captured. Anyone else has questions? All right, so, um, we're going to vote on the amendment. At this time, I'll, I'll vote. All in favor? Are you being official, Ellen? Oh, we are.
All right. Yes.
Opposed.
So that was an overwhelming in favor, two hundred and twenty-four.
Two hundred and twenty-four in favor, sixty-four opposed. So. So the amendment passes. Now we'll vote, uh, on the amended amount, and, uh, which, let's just make sure. I'll, I'll read this again, uh, with the amended amount, and, uh, administration will keep me in on it here. So Article one, to see what sum the district will be authorized to expend for regular construction, the amended amount is nineteen million, five hundred, five thousand, five hundred and twenty-eight. And the gentleman down front, you're pretty ready. Okay, thank you. Do I hear a motion? I have a motion?
Second.
Second, all right. Discussion, please. All right. Seeing no discussion, I call for a vote. All in favor?
Opposed.
Yeah, so opposed. Yeah, the motion, the motion here. So just for clarification, for my clarification, the folks right back up in here, uh, I'm assuming since they see cards, they're in North Berwick, yes? Okay. Thank you. All right, Article one passed.
As amended.
As amended, yes, all right. All right, Article number two, to see what sum the district will be authorized to expend for special education, school board recommends nine million, one hundred sixteen thousand, seven hundred and eleven dollars.
School board recommendation.
And a second, thank you. Any discussion?
Can't hear what was said.
So the motion was, there was a motion made, it was, uh, seconded, and I've asked for discussion.
For what?
Article number two.
To second regular construction?
Yes. And if we have discussion, then I can do.
Mark, Allison, Lebanon?
Good evening, Mark.
Hi, Jay. Okay, um, I see a significant increase. Can I ask why?
Sure.
I figured that's, you know, if I know why, then I have any.
That's, uh, please, please go ahead.
All right, so a couple of things. The first one is that you'll notice physical therapists, occupational therapists, and our school's psychological providers, um, all of those seem, as you look at them in fiscal year twenty-four, they were not included in the budget, and that's because they were in local entitlement. And local entitlement, for those, um, of you that are not federal, that it is a federal grant that, that we receive as part of our special education process, and we receive about, it's roughly nine hundred thousand every year. Um, and we often put, um, have our staff, some of our line items for our staff in those, uh, in the grant, and sometimes we move them out. Um, the challenge with local entitlement is that you have to ensure that you are spending the same amount per, per student or for our students every single year. So that's why there's a fluctuation. Sometimes you'll see staff go out of our local budget and into local entitlement, and then come out of local entitlement and go into the regular budget. So those are the primary large, um, large contributors to this line item increasing. So it basically is coming from entitlements to our paying for? Yes, yeah. And then we're, these are not new positions. These are positions that we've had for many years, uh, that are just, that are swinging back into our budget. And they're basically needed for the special ed? Yes.
Okay, yes.
I'll just make one clarification. Well, um, in fiscal twenty-four, we had basically two years' worth of this grant funding available to us. Uh, as Audrey mentioned, the local budget has to spend the same, same amount or more per student every year. Um, and we budget, in our local budget, staff, but during those post-COVID couple of years, we had trouble hiring special education staff with teachers and techs. And, uh, therefore, we, some of the things that we had budgeted in grant funds were paid for with local funding so that we retained per student expenditure. So in twenty-four, we had two years of grant to spend, and in fiscal twenty-five, we'll have only the one. So we had some extra grant funding this current year.
Additional questions?
Hi, Emily, uh, from North Berwick. So, forgive me if this is a silly question, but so the numbers, the increases and decreases that I see associated with the various salary raise and wages under the special education, um, article, for example, the two hundred and sixteen thousand dollar plus increase for director, assistant director, MHA teaching director. Is there an additional, uh, position being added here, or is that, is that related to the things that you were just talking about? Okay. And so, one of these decreases do directly relate to decreases in actual staff?
We do have, um, a decrease in staff as far as, one of our assistant director positions was, um, taken out of the budget for the upcoming school year. We also have, um, you know, every year we look at students and student enrollment and what students need supports. Um, so there are some fluctuations with that sometimes as far as educational technicians, um, and teachers.
Well, I just know that, so I have a child with special needs, so I just know that there's, it's very, very difficult. I mean, my son has very significant special needs, so he's almost guaranteed a one-on-one, like he can't function without a one-on-one. But there's a lot of kids that need support that are literally just pushed into the regular classrooms that it's, the teachers are struggling significantly. So how, how are we eliminating some of these ed tech positions and/or, you know, teacher positions, which is what it looks like? So just, I just, I'm trying to make sure that I'm understanding correctly, like the teacher salaries are going down, but maybe that's not the case.
Okay, so for the teacher salary, that is particular to MHA, so Maryford Academy, and due enrollment at that school. There's one teaching position less for next year than there is currently. All the other, um, teaching positions remain, um, the same as, as this current year.
Okay.
Yeah. And as far as ed techs, they're, in, as I'm looking at it, I don't see a decrease.
You're right, I see anything there.
Yeah. Okay. Okay, yeah, no. I guess I, as well.
All right, so. Haley, you want to answer?
Are, are any of the special ed teachers actually taking a big cut, or is it all due to, like, school's closing and stuff like that? Because like you, I agree, there's definitely, I have a student who's in full-time social ed, but I have also students that have needed one-on-one that not necessarily that that was always available, so.
Sure. So, um, I heard IEP coordinator in there, too. So we had shifted an IEP coordinator. Um, one of our IEP coordinators moved to the director of the HSA this, this summer. So we hired another, um, IEP coordinator at a different salary rate, just based on the contract and experience and schooling. So that's some of the difference with that, but we still have two IEP coordinators going into the fall.
Okay, because I also, I've heard a lot about, um, contracts not getting agreed with ed techs and stuff like that, due to budget issues, at least. That was, I don't know how much of that had to do with, like, I'm not adding it.
Sure. There are three, um, educational technician positions that were, um, were specific to, um, the middle school, the literacy lab, and the math lab, and those positions are not contained, but those were not special education positions, so you won't see them in this article.
So are they, okay, that we had different articles?
Yes.
Yeah. Which article?
Maybe, uh, ask your question if you have a question.
So my, my question was.
Can you, sorry, just to state.
Melissa, North Berwick. Um, my question was on the middle school specifically for the math and/or literacy. Um, I guess they're not special ed teachers, but those classes, I know they are being cut. So I guess if that's not a part of this article, I can come back up, but.
It was.
So would that have passed them to not be cut?
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
How many?
Could you state your name, please?
Uh, my name is Xavier Brandon, and I'm from Lebanon, Maine. I'm a student at Noble Middle School. How many of special ed teachers would be getting cut?
How many special education teachers are being cut? Is that your question?
Yes.
There are no special education positions being cut for, except for the MHA, which is Maryford Academy, which is part of our high school.
Okay, thank you.
Hello.
Hello.
I'm Xavier Devlin.
Hold that right now.
I'm Xavier Devlin, um, and I am from Berwick, Maine. I'm, as a student at Noble Middle School, I have many friends in this special education program and know how much they rely on it in order to learn and pass. Um, I just wanted to comment on that. Thank you.
Any more questions?
My name is Kristy Hayes, that's from Berwick. My son Xavier, who just spoke actually is not in the special education department, but is in special education services, uh, to be clear, but the literacy and, um, math class are being cut in middle school. Are we adding any additional staff to cover the work that they have been doing within the special education program? Because there is a significant overlap. How are their positions and their roles in supporting students going to be handled without those positions within the special education program?
So, Audrey, can you just clarify that that was part of?
Article, I understand that was Article one. I'm wondering, within the special education program, we are not adding staff, correct?
We're not adding staff, correct.
So anything that was handled by those regular education positions of math and literacy lab will now be handled by special educators who don't have that support for students? Is there additional support within the special ed program that is being created, or how will special education teachers, ed techs, et cetera, manage those additional needs for students who have those math and language issues?
They're going to handle it like we have consistently handled that through resource, support, um, and specialized instruction.
Uh, specialized instruction, that followed as a special education?
Yes. So I know what you're getting. You want me to answer the question from Article one, and I certainly do.
No, I'm wondering if there was additional support for special education. I'm not asking about Article one, I just want that for you to be.
So I'm, I'm going to answer part of it based on number, Article number one. When, um, there were some proposed, um, cuts to the Noble Middle School and part of, with the three educational technicians, the board reinstated three. the board reinstated three positions, teaching positions. So that we are going to be addressing the literacy and math supports as both of them are multi-tiered systems of support. So that will handle very, that will handle those, you know, anybody identified or looked at for needing some additional support in those areas that may not necessarily be a special education piece. For the special education piece, that falls again to specialized instruction. And the instructors are special education teachers and support.
And do they have space for that increased workload?
They do. The, the special education teachers or the other teachers, which.
Understood, there's an overlap. But I do expect that the special education teachers will have an increase in their, in their load based upon losing those resources. So that's, I'm just wondering if that's an additional workload.
They'll have an increase if a student is identified as needing a special education instruction, and then they, they will, you know, go through that process. Yeah.
Thank you, yes.
Thank you. I, could you comment on article one? And how many regular educators are cut out of that article that we voted for? Since that seems to be confusing for a lot of people. Sure, please, go ahead.
So you want teachers? Okay. Okay. So we have down eleven teaching positions in article one throughout the district. Two of those positions were leave of absence and a retirement. Four were from our Easter funding, which we received as part of the COVID funds. One is the world language position that was just recommended to be placed back in the position. And a few, two, I have as being based on the consolidation, which has been amended, so those positions are not there. I mean, not in this portion of being cut. And then there were three educational technicians from Noble Middle School.
Thank you.
Yes, and the four Noble Flex. And that was also from Easter, the COVID funding that we have received.
So maybe just, just so we're clear, can you, based on the amended article number one, what is the, the number of positions that are being reduced?
It was, it's down to eight.
So there are eight positions that are being eliminated from the budget. Thank you, I'd ask you to come to the mic, please.
I have a question.
Go ahead.
Sarah, I'm from North Berwick. I'll be honest, I'm one of those people that votes for you guys and then prays that you vote the way that I want you to, and I appreciate all that you do. But I remember, I'm just trying to understand. So the amendment for what we've been discussing with the child was sort of more hundred percent clear on. We're losing the teachers. We voted, obviously, we will pay more to keep them. Three hundred thousand. You eventually can do what you want with it. Or I think you did put a stipulation to try to at least keep some of the job. But what you're telling us is that you still possibly might decline us that. Is that correct?
So.
Is that, like, that is your right? I just want to confirm.
So I would just ask the administration to clarify.
Like, we just voted for three hundred thousand more dollars with the stipulation that we would like to keep those teachers. And you are telling us that you still might not keep those teachers.
That's not what this, I'm going to clarify this and say that is not what this is about. The bigger question was about how many across the district, staffing across the district, positions have been either eliminated based on programming or based on the fact that we had funding that we no longer have for. So there are two separate issues. Yes, there were staff that were impacted by the consolidation. And that was the motion and the amendment that passed. So those, and with the intention of using those funds to support the world language and the increased art, PBE, STEAM, and library.
But regardless of those intentions, you still might choose not to do that?
The board.
Right. I just want to, yeah, yeah.
Yes, yes, the board has to.
So I'm gonna, I'm gonna ask. If you have a question, just come to my, let's, the question over here, please.
Hi, I'm Joe Forte, North Berwick. Just a quick question, Audrey. As you said, eight positions we're, we're losing. So those teacher positions, where teachers and ed techs, were they all full-time or part-time?
They were teaching positions, yes. And again, some were because of leave of absence. Some were because of enrollment. Some were because of a retirement. So, yeah.
And then how many ed tech positions?
Three.
Three, total across the district.
At this point in time. If we're unable to fill some, that impacts. But those are non-intentional cuts. Those are unable to fill.
Right, thank you.
Okay, good question.
Hi, I'm Robert Travis, Noble Bennett. I'd like to make a motion to call a question.
Thank you. So technically, you don't have to make a motion to call a question. You can just call the question. So you're okay with that, yes? Okay, thank you. All right. So the question has been called. I'm going to allow a little more question?
Thank you. I'm actually not a member of the town any longer, but I am a teacher.
So hang on just one second. So are you a registered voter?
I am a registered voter in Cary Bunkport. I lived in Lebanon. I taught in the district for twenty-three years. And I'm currently a teacher at Noble Middle School.
So, sorry.
I'm not allowed to ask the question.
Yeah, so in order to allow you to speak, we would have to take a vote. There has to be two-thirds majority in favor of allowing that. So I'm going to, oh, that's. Yeah, so yelling doesn't, yelling doesn't do it. So I'm going to, on your call for votes, this vote will allow, and I'm sorry, could you just say your name again, please?
Karina Chapman, I teach social studies.
Karina Chapman, who speaks as a non-resident, all in favor. All right, thank you, and opposed. All right, that's definitely two-thirds. Please go ahead.
Thank you. I just wanted to clarify the ed tech positions that were being cut. I understand that there are three positions being cut at Noble Middle School. But none of those are currently on the docket to be restored in any way. Is that correct?
That's right.
Okay. Then, am I allowed to make a comment?
You may make a comment.
Please, yes.
Okay, thank you. I am concerned, because as a teacher at the school, we already don't have enough ed techs. Sadly, they are often pulled to be elsewhere. I don't have any tech, ed techs in my classroom on a routine basis. And I'm sure I'm supposed to, and I'm sorry, that's so jumpy just because these are my students. I love my kids, and they need to be supported. And they're not getting the support they need. And that bothers me and worries me. I taught in this district for twenty-three years, and our students deserve and have the support cut. Thank you very much.
Okay, I, may I make one clarifying comment on that?
Okay.
Thank you. The goal with reinstating three teaching positions to Noble Middle School is to address the learning in a comprehensive manner. So while I understand your concerns about the removal or elimination of those three ed tech positions, the board has been, has committed to putting in funds to support teachers in those roles to offer supports.
Okay, so the, the motion has been called. So I'm going to call for a vote. All in favor? All right, let, sorry, hang on a second. So we are, let me read. Yeah, we're gonna, just let me re-panic you. So I'm gonna read the article again just so you know which voting. Article number two. To see what sum the district will be authorized to expend for special education, school board recommends nine million, one hundred sixteen thousand, seven hundred and eleven dollars. We've had a motion, and we've had a second. So at this time, a call for a vote. All in favor, please? Okay, I'm going to call for opposed. The motion passes, thank you. All right, article number three. To see what sum the district will be authorized to expend for career and technical education, school board recommends eighty thousand, nine hundred forty-five dollars. Do I hear a motion?
I agree with the school's recommendation.
Hear a motion, go see it, second over here, thank you. Discussion, please. Yes, sir.
Could you please tell us what career and technical services are provided to our students? And hopefully, we can tell you.
So the career and technical services or education is Stanford Regional Technical Center. These funds support our students. We have about one hundred twenty-three students that participate in eleventh and twelfth grade. They go over to Stanford to the Technical Center every single day. And for half their day. So we send half students in the morning, half in the afternoon. They participate in welding, a multitude of different, different automotive. And we have a very robust, we're the second largest group that sends students in. Currently, one hundred eighteen students have been accepted for next year, so.
Thank you. Any other discussion?
Move the question.
Question's been moved. Yeah, we don't need a second. So we just, you can just, we don't need a second. All right, this time a call for vote, all in favor? Okay, opposed. All right, motion passes, thank you. Article number four. To see what sum the district will be authorized to expend for other instruction, school board recommends one million, two hundred thirteen thousand, eight hundred and twenty-nine dollars. Do I hear a motion?
I agree with the school board's recommendation.
And we have a motion and a second, thank you. Discussion, please.
Yes, I'm sorry, I'm stealing it. Maybe you could explain briefly what that is?
What, what is, I'm sorry, I just.
Uh, just, yeah, other instruction.
So other instruction is athletics, co-curricular stipends, benefits for medical and dental, professional development, coaching, traveling, roughing, all of those things.
Thank you. Any others?
Move the question.
I will call for a vote, all in favor? Okay, and opposed. All right, the motion passes. Article number five. To see what sum the district will be authorized to expend for student and staff support. Do I hear a motion?
I agree with the school board's recommendation.
All right, thank you, motion second. Audrey, do you want to just explain student and staff?
Sure, so there are school counselors, social workers, nursing staff, district librarian, the librarian techs that are working in the schools. We also have the director of teaching and learning, professional development, which is, works with professional development for staff and teachers, community engagement, and like summer stipends for nursing and technology.
Thank you. And just in case I do say it, school board recommends four million, nine hundred fifty thousand, two hundred twenty-eight dollars. Just make sure I didn't state that. All right, any discussion?
Hi, I'm from North Berwick. So, you know, Facebook has all kinds of crazy goals going around on it, of course. And I already got some facts, so that's great, thank you. And one of the things that I see here is that, you know, there's a lot of claims going around about how the support staff is being cut. And we learned that some of that is true here from this past discussion. But here, I see that there's a significant amount of increase related to the, where was it? I am looking for it here. Literacy and math coaches, thank you. So is that to help, like, how does that correlate? We've cut the positions elsewhere, but now we've got a hundred and fifty thousand dollar increase.
So we, our math coaches were in one of our grants, so they were just moved back into the regular budget. And we have halftime literacy coach, and that's reflected in this line item as well. And that is not, these are not new positions moving ahead. These are positions that we've had.
Okay, okay, great, thank you.
Sure.
Over here.
Hello, I'm Xavier Devlin from Noble Middle School in Berwick. And I wanted to speak about school guiding counselors because multiple of my peers and friends are suicidal and very depressive because of harsh conditions at school. And I think that it would be a really bad idea to cut guidance counselors or psychiatrists at all just because of how much depression is an issue at the school. Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, it looks to me like that's not getting cut, but I'm a little more, I'm wondering, like, why we're cutting the director of teaching and learning and nurses? Is, like, is that only from Maryford? Or, because director of teaching and learning is going from forty-four thousand to three thousand?
Right, that position's not being cut. It's being moved into a grant.
Okay, fine, okay. And then for the nursing and stuff like that?
Where, which one?
Right on the same first section of nursing staff.
The staff development.
And ed tech community engagement, health, district health coordinator.
So the district health coordinator is also, we're looking at funds for grant for that position. I'm still, I'm trying to figure out where the nursing one is.
It's right underneath that.
Oh, that's right, okay.
So that's actually, that's, I suppose, a piece of a combination of all of, like, extra for, like, summer school nursing, things like that. That's not being cut, but it's in the professional development area that we were able to reduce quite a lot.
Okay, so this is one of the ways to, like.
We are not making, like, nursing staff. And we are working with the Alphondt grant, which we received. So that, if you notice, a lot of our professional development lines are going down. It's not because we're offering less. It's because that we're working in collaboration with accessing funds so that we can use some of those funds to help our professional development, to help keep our budget a little bit.
Kristi Hayes, Devon from Berwick. Like others, I'm a little bit unsure of how the money's being allocated as it cuts, like, some changes. Can you please clarify if there are positions around student and staff support, whether it be a guidance counselor or social workers or anything that would fall within this realm that are being cut or eliminated? Are we losing any of these supports now?
We're, we're not. We're just adding positions that came in from Easter. So with the social workers, there were two positions.
Hang on, I'm sorry, you're just a little excuse for the mic, but I didn't quite hear that.
We have two positions that we're adding that were in the Easter funds from COVID We have two positions that we're adding that were in the ESR funds from COVID that are moving into the budget. Other than that, there are no counselors or social workers that are being cut.
So just to clarify, no cuts?
No cuts in those two areas.
Alright, and does that change the staff to student ratio anyway? Is the staff to student ratio changing in any way? It's pretty much remained the same.
It's remained the same. It's actually probably going down because our movement's going down a little bit, so.
Thank you.
Hold it there.
Hi, my name is Xavier Duran from London. Would any band teachers be getting cut?
No band, no band teacher cuts.
Okay.
Thank you.
Perk, no question, you have it. I'm just wondering what the proposed lease for equipment, are there areas more for standardization?
So the proposed number, the budget amount for equipment?
You're looking for a lease two twenty-three.
And you're looking for details on that?
Yeah.
That's a technology piece for the coming year.
Technology piece for the coming years, the PCs or something?
No.
She thinks, she thinks I'm the, I'm the PC person.
It'll just need to be one minute.
No more PCs in my house.
So it's a combination of keyless door portions, the firewall, iPads, Chromebooks, projectors, cameras, security cameras.
Thanks, Nancy. Any more questions?
Move the question.
Okay, I will call for a vote. And, yeah, okay, well, thank you, Sue. Just to remind you of the, what's your voting on? To see what sum, the district will be authorized to expend for student and staff support. School board recommends four million nine hundred fifty thousand two hundred twenty-eight dollars. All in favor? Okay, and opposed? Motion passes. Article number six. To see what sum, the district will be authorized to expend for assistant administration. School board recommends one million four hundred seventy-four thousand eight hundred seventy-seven dollars. Do I hear a motion? Motion here, second. Second, thank you. Discussion, please. Alright, see no discussion. I'll call for a vote. All in favor? Okay, thank you. Opposed? Motion passes. Article number seven. To see what sum, the district will be authorized to expend for school administration. School board recommends two million six hundred twenty-three thousand five hundred fifty-one dollars. Do I hear a motion? Hear a motion? And a second, thank you. Discussion, please. Go ahead, please.
I'm Shelby Lemon. I see up here that there's an increase in principal, assistant principal, and dean wages of almost ninety-five thousand dollars. I'm just wondering if someone can clarify why there's that increase and we're cutting other positions?
These are, these are contracted salary agreements. And it's across all of our schools and all of our administrators.
So we're increasing wages for principals, deans, and vice principals, but we're cutting positions that, that work with students? Would you clarify that?
And, yes, sure. So every position in this budget, support staff, librarians, nurses, teachers, educational technicians, drivers, custodians, everybody has contracted wages that have increased.
I, I just, I guess I'm just kind of wondering why there's such a larger increase in that budget line item as opposed to other ones?
I think if you, if you look at some of the other line items, like regular instruction, you'll see that that is significant as well, because that's our entire teaching staff. So again, this is our principals, assistants, and our deans. So this is that whole, our whole group, that whole group. Thank you, yes.
Hi, my name is Xavier Duran. And I know someone who brought in some pretty bad stuff to school. I'm not gonna say who they are or what it is. And this isn't the first time that they've been suspended. This is like their tenth, and they still haven't gotten expelled.
So, so that's probably not a budget hearing topic. And what I would suggest you do is maybe talk to your building principal?
Yes, that's great. Thank you.
But thank you for bringing that up. Any more discussion? I see a couple people coming down.
Hello, I'm Allison Riley from Berwick. I'm wondering if you have the information of what's the average, hang on, your question. What is the average increase in salaries in the administration percentage-wise versus the average increase to general instructors?
The average increase to administration for next year is three point two five percent for the educational technicians, transportation, technology. Let's go, transportation's four percent, educational technicians are four percent. Other being central office positions are three percent. Classroom teachers are seven percent.
Okay, yeah. Thank you.
Hi, Tom Walker, Berwick. Can you provide some clarification on the cuts in the clerk staff, please?
Sure. So we have a retirement happening at the high school. That's not being filled with a new position. So that's that position. And then as a school based on enrollment numbers, they're going down like an administrative system as well.
Okay. And can you also clarify the tuition reimbursement tab?
Oh, yeah, that's the Alphonse. Yes. So we got our layer that we're utilizing, sorry. We're utilizing outside funds to support our tuition reimbursement through the Alphonse fund. And so we were able to take off some of it for year. So not an arable cost.
Awesome, thank you.
Hi, I just heard you say that the percent increase for, and please correct me if I'm wrong, but does it apply specifically to this line item of principal, assistant principal, and dean when you said it was paying a half percent?
Three point two five.
Three point two five. But this percent increase comes out to about six point five?
That includes longevity.
What does that mean?
That means that there is, in the contract for staff, there's a longevity line. So if you're in an opposition for a certain period of time, you receive some longevity. So that's, that's makes up that difference.
Sure, sure, sure. And who writes the contracts that raise the points?
The contract, there is an association. So the association works with administration and the school board to come up with the contract. So it gets worked through that time. Oftentimes, it's a multi-year contract. It can be two years or three years. Next year, we're negotiating with three associations or three contracts. So if it's.
Is it, is it an association and union?
Yes.
Okay. And so, for example, it sounds like there might be principals, assistant principals, and deans that because of their longevity are getting a six and a half or more percent increase in their pay. Am I understanding that correctly?
Yeah, it will vary based on their experience, how they've been in district.
Bus drivers are an issue for everybody. Canabunk is trying to increase their salary to thirty an hour, which is a big deal. Increasing salaries sometimes is helpful in attracting new people, sometimes not. Bus drivers are fainless positions, from what I hear from most drivers and from my students who work in the buses. I don't know exactly how to move forward with this particular question, however. With the question of admin increase percentage in salary, I also, the six point, I don't remember. Six point one, I think maybe it was six point five, but I did the math, but I write that number down. Six point five. The drivers are overall receiving approximately a two percent increase in their salary. So first of all, are any bus driver positions being added?
So, so that is the next article.
Oh, I thought I was.
No.
I was wondering why you're talking about admin salary so much, and I got confused on that.
Alright, any, any other discussion? Question's been moved. I'll restate the article. It's been a longer than normal night, which is in the bed, and I miss. To see what sum, this is Article seven. To see what sum, the district will be authorized to expend for school administration. School board recommends two million six hundred twenty-three thousand five hundred fifty-one dollars. I'll call for a vote. All in favor, please? Alright, thank you. And opposed? Motion passes. Alright, Article number eight. And for the article. Denise, are you, let me get to. You're already on that, okay. Or at least you raised your hand. Alright, Article number eight. To see what sum, the district will be authorized to expend for transportation and buses. School board recommends three million eight hundred seven thousand nine hundred thirty-three dollars. Do I hear a motion?
Move the school board's recommendation.
Motion, do I hear a second?
Second.
Alright, thank you. Discussion, please.
Everything I said before, I won't keep on repeating it. However, so I also just, about one more thing. We're looking at six point, six five percent increase in the director salaries. But only a two percent increase in the salaries of bus drivers, two point something. I didn't write that point down, but regardless. My question is, are we adding any drivers or removing any drivers' positions?
We are not adding or decreasing drivers. We're having trouble getting drivers.
So. You did this so eloquently, I don't know how to do it. But I would like to propose that we add to the sum recommended by the school board, an amount of thirty-seven thousand six hundred thirty dollars. And the intent that it be used to increase driver salaries by three percent.
So you're making a motion for an amendment?
Is that allowed?
Yes.
Okay, yes, that's what I'm doing. I'm asking if we can please increase our driver salary by three percent, which I know is up to school board discretion as to how that would be spent. But given the fact that with a two percent increase in driver salaries and a six and a half percent increase in transportation administration salaries, it seems like a fair and good thing because what we really, really need in addition to an excellent transportation director are some bus drivers. So an increased salary would number one, helping retention and helping attraction. So I asked for thirty-seven thousand six hundred thirty dollars be added to the budget amount.
Sorry, thirty-seven thousand six hundred thirty?
Yes, please. I believe my math is correct, or somebody wants to check that. But that was, where is the line of salary line? I'm all anxious now, so now I'm having trouble finding my math. Drivers, last year, this particular fiscal year, it was one thousand two hundred fifty-four thousand, one million two hundred fifty-four thousand two hundred ninety-six. And I believe multiplied by point of three, that comes out to approximately thirty-seven thousand six hundred thirty dollars. I would be happy for someone to double check my math. But that'd be a three percent additional increase in the salaries of our bus drivers.
So we have a motion for an amendment. Do I hear a second? A second, alright.
I'm gonna clarify that with discussion, that the drivers are at four percent right now. Some of the fluctuation that you see is based on the fact that we have drivers that have been here and have a lot of experience, and some newer drivers that are not as high on the scale as some other drivers. But we just looked at the numbers again, and they're at four percent.
Alright, so are you good with your?
So should I amend my opinion or just double that up?
So you can, since you made the amendment, you can withdraw your amendment and make another one if you'd like. And assuming the person who made, who did the second is okay with that? Okay.
Alright, so the way that I calculate the percent increase is by taking the proposed increase, which would be twenty-three thousand two hundred sixty-one dollars, no, twenty-nine thousand five hundred seventy dollars. Which I don't understand, but twenty-nine thousand five hundred seventy dollars divided by one million two hundred fifty-four thousand two hundred ninety-six dollars to see what the percent increase is. Yes?
So that is the net increase. What you're not taking into effect is that we have different staff from fiscal twenty-four to twenty-five, and they may sit higher or lower on the scale of pay.
Understood.
So if you have a driver at the top of the scale, it will be different than the driver at the bottom of the scale?
Understood. After the administration, we had an average increase of approximately six and a half percent. My understanding is that some administrators will probably receive a three percent increase, whereas others may receive an eight percent increase. And that those numbers are not consistent across the board for each administrator, based on the contract. Is that correct? It's an average.
Right, so your average is right. That is the way you would calculate it. So I understand.
So that the budget line item increase for increasing our director of transportation salary reflects the average salary for our transportation director increase of about six and a half percent. And our line item increase for our bus drivers reflects an increase in that budget line item of approximately two percent. Is that correct?
That's the, that's the number. That's the net increase for the year.
Understanding that some, some drivers then are receiving a lower than two percent increase in their salary? Because if two percent is the average increase, so we're neither adding nor removing positions? So are positions not being increased because there are new, new positions coming on, or?
Every driver is getting four percent, has budgeted a four percent increase, every driver. What is different is if you have a driver in fiscal twenty-four who leaves the district and is at the top of the scale, and we've hired a driver for fiscal twenty-five, we have an open position, and they're maybe bottom of the scale or middle of the scale. The, the net dollars will be less, even though the position itself will see the four percent increase.
Understood. So if they're getting a four percent increase, and my intention was then to say, I would suggest that they receive an increase equal to the transportation director approximately six percent.
Okay, so you want to add an additional two?
So then I would need to amend my number. I don't know what that number is, because I don't have a salary business paper in my head that I would like to recommend, that the drivers receive the same percentage cost of living increase that our director recommend. And that is a big enough, because, you know, I don't know how you're, but that's what I'd like to say. I think that, that our drivers recommending four percent deserve at least as much of a consideration of cost of increase, of cost of living, because, again, driver salaries are fainless. They're such a fainless position, as so many educating positions are.
So let me just ask, what is, we're gonna come up with a number.
So do, do you want to come back at me with a number? Or do you want me to just pick a number and say I'd like to use it to increase driver salaries? Because that could also include increased income salaries, which I think would be prudent. Uh, six and a half?
Who are all of them?
Right.
The question was, could be addressed or clarified?
Can I clarify a thing, because I think I understand what you're trying to say. Is that okay?
I don't mind pausing. It did procedurally work. If it does not look procedurally, then I'm finished.
So I'd like, I'd like to not get us going in lots of.
Yeah, that's fine. I just was trying to help, because I think some of the things that the contract and outwork is getting a little confusing. Like someone who understands it, so we should something to amend in the middle.
I do understand how contracts.
No, you mean like the longevity stations.
So let's, if you don't mind.
I would like to amend my amendment, or just to amend the amendment. Propose a different amendment.
So, so, yeah, so hang on. Sorry, I'm sorry. So the amendment, you withdrew your amendment, so you just need to make an amendment.
Okay. I would like to amend instead, an amount of two-thirds of that. So I would like to offer an amendment to this amount, and the amount of twenty-five thousand dollars added with the intent to increase driver salaries equally across the board by approximately, I believe that's two percent. added with the intent to increase driver salaries equally across the board by approximately, I believe that's two percent. Both the starting salaries for user drivers and the, you know, the existing salaries, and for the board to decide how best to allot that in order to increase our driver retention and drive higher, twenty-five thousand dollars.
All right, thank you, do I hear a second on that amendment?
A second?
All right, a second will be here, thank you. And now we're going to be, any discussion will be related to the amendment, which is to add twenty-five thousand dollars to Article number eight.
May I?
You may.
So one of our board members, I have her, her microphone isn't working, and I believe that I am going to address, I hope, her question or clarification. So we do have different associations, and should something come up as part of salary negotiations, when there already is a contract and there is an association, that is something that would be very difficult to do. Currently, this, so this group, which are the bus drivers, mechanics, they do not have a, an association at this point in time, and will in the fall. So I hope that addressed and clarified, Peg, your question, your comment, okay?
Thank you. If anyone has a question, can you use the word union?
Yeah, sure, thank you.
So the statement I just, I heard, Peg, was, can we use the word union versus talking about association, just as I think that sounds like, what, everybody understands where the union is? And I see you nodding, yes, but, all right, thank you.
May I speak to the motion? Um, obviously, I'm all for bus drivers being paid more, that's a, that's a no-brainer. What they do is very difficult, and it's hard to get a second job when you drive in the morning, and then you get a couple hours off, and you drive in the afternoon. That is really difficult for drivers. Um, I've spoken to a number of drivers, and I've spoken to our director about one of the difficulties, and I think it's important to say this here. The number-one reason that they stop driving or don't drive for the district, and I've asked people to drive for the district, and the number-one reason is not pay. The number-one reason is student base. I say that to a crowd of parents, because that's enough.
Kelly?
I have a question on the rest of this, so not on the amendment.
Okay. Oh, so not on the amendment?
Yeah.
Okay. Anything related to the amendment?
Yes.
Please go.
For reports to be done, I would say, for a whole package statement, that increasing the salaries might just help a bit with driver retention and acquisition, which it does, probably, those who point out that's maybe not as much as, well, my, but it might sound a little bit bad.
Thank you.
Um, Mallory from Lebanon, also a constituent district as well. So... Here we go, okay. Um, so I think just a clarifying thing from the, do bus drivers also receive longevity when they receive the increases? So, for example, just for clarification, like, if I was to get an increase, because I've been in the district for longer than fifteen years, my percentage is, because of my longevity, is going to be higher, even if everyone from the contract, because my longevity is going to be a larger amount than someone who's only been in the district for five years, six years, seven years, correct? So the same is for bus drivers as well, and having the longevity is a way to help keep bus drivers and have repeat, keep them coming back, correct? So that's why percentages would be the same across the board. Thank you, just quick.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
Hi, William Whalen of Burwick. Can I just piggyback off of what you were saying, sir? I would say I also work in transportation, I do not work in the school district, I work on the railroad, and I don't like my job, nobody does. Absolutely, everyone on the railroad despises the job, it's awful. The baby-sitting keeps us there, paying, and in all honesty, when it comes down to it, as much as some of the things we deal with, I, I know it works right now, because I almost lost my finger. It's, luckily, with a plastic surgeon, I actually have another digit, I go up to count to nine point seven five. But nonetheless, if it wasn't for the increase of pay that we've been getting, actually, even with that, we're still looking for other work, but it certainly helps. If we were to actually make an amount to, a percentage of ours, actually, that I would maybe we should be making, all of us would have stayed, all of us would be still there. At this point, we probably lost about two-thirds of our employees, and that's the journey that is pay and benefits. I just can't imagine what they should be with the increase of everything else that's going on. So if we can do something to keep the jobs as they are, and a lot of the confusion that we're having with all of this, with the budget work and so forth, because I'm not an accountant, and I'm willing to bet that most of my people here aren't either. We're just trying to understand what we can do to help people keep their jobs, either by increasing the budget, or by, I mean, something else, if there's something else that's actually helping to pay for them besides the budget, awesome. We really want to try and keep people's jobs going, and help them also boost up their income with the fluctuation of everything increasing across the board. Thank you.
Thank you. Kelly?
Hey, guys, I apologize if I need to make aside. It is eight P M almost, and the babysitting portion of the evening, Sophie needs to leave, should you guys go away with your kids?
Yeah, I'm just saying.
Are you calling the motion?
It's really tough.
So, I'm going to allow a question?
Thank you. Uh, not a question, I'd also like to add, the amendment, if that's possible.
Um, so we're, we can't, we can't amend the amendment?
Oh, because the only thing I would want to say is let's also not cut medical and retirements. I don't know how we could add that into what was said, but... Yeah, please, just one more time, so.
The, the medical is based on what people are actually taking, so if new people have coverage with a spouse or something, that this actually reflects what the cost will be based on right now. So that it's a practice, that somebody's family situation has changed. Similarly, for retirement, that's a calculation, it's a percentage based on wages, and so whoever participates in the retirement plan, that's factored into the budget, so that if this increase is simply just who is taking the tools of those things.
Thanks for the clarification. Thank you. All right, I'm going to call for votes. All in favor?
Can you use his name?
Yes, sorry. Thank you. Good job, you know, took the test. So this is the, we're voting on the amendment, so we are amending the amount. Do you have any, did you do that?
So that would make it three million, eight thirty-two, nine thirty-three. Again, that's with an additional twenty-five thousand dollar amendment.
All right, so everybody clear on that, we're just, we're voting to amend the amount.
We are, the amendment is to add twenty-five thousand dollars to this article, which would make the total article three million, eight hundred and thirty-two thousand, nine hundred and thirty-three dollars.
With the intent to increase driver salary.
Correct, with, with the intent to create, to increase driver salary. All right, now let's try it, all in favor for the amendment? All right, opposed? All right, motion passes. All right. Sorry? If, if, is there, can you just come to the, the mic, please?
Deborah Wilson from Lebanon, would like an actual count of that motion, please.
So is there, there needs to be seven, oh, sorry, wrong process. Um, we'll do a, we'll do another vote, and we'll do a count.
That was a second, wonderful.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. All right, so we are voting on the amendment to add twenty-five thousand dollars to the total amount, which is going to make it three million, eight hundred and thirty-two thousand, nine hundred and thirty-three dollars. Again, this is the amendment, all in favor? All right, the motion passes. The, the vote is one sixty-eight to sixty-nine. Excuse me. One sixty-two to sixty-nine in favor. All right, that's the amendment. So now we're going to vote on the, oh, sorry. So, yes, so I guess, any more discussion?
I just had a quick question about, of Haley and Warren from Burwick. Are we losing a transportation specialist completely? It looks like the community was not two of them, is there a date cut, like, what's happening with that thirty thousand dollar decrease?
Midway through the year, we're going to have a shift in staff.
Okay, and it's going to go from like two to one or something, or?
It's going to shift, yeah. It's a little premature for me to say that, it's a, it's an employment thing, so...
So this isn't like we're cutting someone, this is that it just might change on, because of other circumstances?
There's not a cut.
Okay, thanks.
So the question was, are there any cuts, and the answer is no. Any more discussion? Questions can call. All right, I'll ask for a vote. We are voting on, on Article number nine. Excuse me, eight, sorry. "To see what some of the district will be authorized to expend for transportation and buses, the amount will be three million, eight hundred thousand, eight hundred and thirty-two thousand, nine hundred and thirty-three dollars." All in favor? All right, opposed? Motion passes. All right, Article number nine. "To see what some of the district will be authorized to expend for facilities maintenance, School Board recommends $6,503,195." Do I hear a motion? Do I hear a motion, do I hear a second, please? Second, thank you. Any discussion?
I'm Elizabeth Forbes from Lebanon, and my question is just, is there any money in here that's allocated for the ELS system? Is that then decided and addressed? I know that's been a long time issue.
It has not yet been decided. The code came in after the budget had been approved to move forward. Um, currently, we are pumping the REEPO weekly, yes, and it will be on the agenda for our future board meeting.
Okay, thank you.
Art Nelson, Lebanon. I see a quarter decrease in the capital investment project list. Can you tell me why?
So a couple of things, we have some bigger projects coming in. One is coming in as the second question when you vote, and that's on the SRF funds to work through some air upgrades for our air quality and ventilation systems, so that's one portion. Um, the other thing is, is that we worked really hard in collaboration with our maintenance department, with Kevin, who's head of facilities, just to talk through some of those items that absolutely need to be done now, what can we hold off on? So we do have a plan, a capital improvement plan that would go through some of those pieces, so we do have things that, you know, hit twenty-six, the school year, twenty-six, twenty-seven, and onward.
So we're just being moved forward?
Correct, thank you.
Hi, I'm Amy Forbes from ELS, well, Lebanon. Um, I have a question about... Are you deciding to close ELS in the following years?
That's a really good question. So if you look at our budget, in this section, there's a money subside, a money subside, so we can do a study. And that study's going to look at all of the schools in the district, and it's going to look at how many students are in the school, how many classrooms are in the schools, how many staff are in the schools. And we also have to add a preschool at some point for our youngest students. So we're going to look at all of that, and we're looking as part of that at Lebanon Elementary. So I can't say we're closing Lebanon Elementary, but we're looking at all of our schools to see, do we have the right numbers in the right places?
Okay, thank you.
So, Ira, that sounds like something that, that would be a great participation opportunity for the community members as the board discusses that, uh, in the future?
Yes, thank you.
Good question. Any, any others? All right, I'll, oh. Uh, hang on, one second.
Um, is Lebanon Elementary shutting down due to, um, mechanical issues or, like, other maintenance issues?
As we just talked about, we are looking at all of our schools, and we're going to make decisions about all of our schools, you know, like Lebanon Elementary, do we have the, do those students continue, do our students continue in the school, do they go down? Hansley School, House Huzzy School, House Nolton School, House High School, House the Middle School, so we're looking at every, every building.
But for the right now, if your question is, next, next September, is it closing, it sounds like the answer is, it is not closing. All right, I'll call for a vote now, all in favor? Now, let me state the motion again. This is, this is a good thing, we generally don't have a whole lot of discussions. This is Article nine, "To see what some of the district will be authorized to expend for facilities maintenance, School Board recommends $6,503,195." All in favor? All right, and opposed? Motion passes. Article number ten. "To see what some of the district will be authorized to expend for debt service and other commitments, School Board recommends zero dollars."
Move the School Board's nomination?
Michael, in second. Any discussion?
Move the question.
All right, let's vote. All in favor?
Funny what happens after a couple hours.
And opposed? Motion passes. Article number eleven. Article number eleven. To see what some the district will be authorized to expend for all other expenditures, school board recommends twenty-five thousand dollars. Do you hear a motion? Uh, motion and second, thank you. Discussion? Alright, seeing none. I'll call for a vote. All in favor? Alright, and opposed. Motion passes. Alright, now we get into the wordy article. So, Article twelve and thirteen raise funds for the proposed school budget. Article number twelve. To see what some the district will appropriate for the total cost of funding public education from kindergarten to grade twelve as described in the Essential Programs and Services Funding Act, and to see what some the district will raise and assess as each municipality's contribution to the total cost of funding public education from kindergarten to grade twelve as described in the Essential Programs and Services Funding Act in accordance with the Maine Revised Statutes, Title twenty-eight, Section fifteen, six eighty-eight. Recommended amounts set forth below are, and I'm gonna cover the first, the total appropriated by municipality. Town of Berwick, sixteen million three hundred and thirty-seven thousand five hundred and sixty-two dollars. Town of Lebanon, twelve million five hundred and twenty-eight thousand nine hundred and sixty-seven dollars. Sorry?
No, this is... So, we'll get to that.
So, we have... I'm just reading the article at the moment. That's why I said it's the wordy part. And Town of North Berwick, eight million six hundred and fifty-six thousand five hundred and eighty-two. So, the total appropriated funds are thirty-seven million five hundred and twenty-three thousand one hundred and eleven dollars. The total raised and district assessments by the municipality, Town of Berwick, six million three hundred and seventy-eight thousand twenty-two dollars. Town of Lebanon, five million one hundred and ten thousand nine hundred and nine dollars. Town of North Berwick, four million eight hundred and thirty-nine thousand eight hundred and fifty-one dollars. So, the total raised amount is sixteen million three hundred and twenty-eight thousand seven hundred and eighty-two. As an explanation, the district's contribution to the total cost of funding public education from kindergarten to grade twelve as described in the Essential Programs and Services Funding Act is the amount of money determined by state law to be the minimum amount that the district must raise and assess in order to receive the full amount of state dollars. As a note, the above appropriations are determined in accordance with the Maine Revised Statutes, Title twenty-a, Section fifteen, sixty-eight, one. The amounts to be raised reflect the cost-sharing formula under Private and Special Law nineteen sixty-seven, Chapter sixty-seven, in accordance with the Maine Revised Statutes, Title twenty-a, Section fourteen, eighty-one, dash, A, two. Do you hear a motion?
No.
Do you have a motion? And a second. Discussion, please. Yes, sir.
Sorry. Jonathan Paul, North Berwick. I'm confused, and so I wonder if you can help me with that confusion. These numbers listed here that we're about to vote on not including the amendments to all of the articles. So, when we vote on this, are we saying that this is the amount that we're gonna put to the voters?
So, an amendment? Go ahead.
So, Article twelve simply is addressing Essential Programs and Services so that the state subsidy formula, and what they're saying is they said, based on the formula, the cost of education for our students is thirty-seven five twenty-three eight one eleven. And the amount that we must pay as a district has to be at least sixteen three twenty-eight seven eighty-two. So, this article, all it's saying is the subsidy formula blocks us thirty-seven million. If we contribute the sixteen million, they will put in the other twenty-one million. So, that's all this is saying. For your, for the purposes of the amendments that we made earlier, the three hundred thousand and the twenty-five thousand, there will need to be a motion in Articles thirteen and fourteen to raise those additional funds for those nerds.
Thank you.
Okay.
Any more discussion?
Sharon from Lebanon. And it may have to be more on thirteen and fourteen, but why do those have to be made? Why do those have to be motions when it's already gonna approve prior? So, those numbers, why aren't they just added with the new numbers to give us a new number? Because those motions have already been made and passed.
Yeah, it's a legal...
The articles that we raised were the expenses. The articles thirteen and fourteen deal with the revenue and assessing the towns. So, it's the other side of the equation. We need to make sure that Articles thirteen and fourteen cover all the expenses we've approved in the first of written articles.
And if your question is... It sounds like your question is more targeted at Articles thirteen and fourteen versus Article twelve. Is that correct?
Uh, yes.
So, we'll address Articles thirteen and fourteen in a moment. Any more discussion on Article twelve? And did you catch Denise's explanation? It's this is the state's formula?
Question?
I'm sorry, did I...
Same question.
So, the question has been moved. I'll call for a vote. All in favor, please? Thank you, and opposed. Motion passes. Alright, Article thirteen. This is going to be... We get to it, it'll be written valid. However, a motion for an amendment is in order for Article thirteen. And we have the amount?
Someone beginning to make a motion to amend the number?
I'll make a motion to amend the number.
By three hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars.
By three hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars.
To be eight million...
To be eight million.
Four hundred and twenty-six thousand.
Four hundred and twenty-six thousand.
Seven hundred and seventy-eight dollars.
Seven hundred and seventy-eight dollars.
I say I do.
So, there is a, what's like fifty-eight cents?
Um, honestly, that's the only number that has been paid, so I'm going to drop it.
Alright. So, I have a motion that I hear a second. And I hear a second, alright. And discussion?
Okay.
Alright, since there hasn't been time to place any discussion, I'm going to allow discussion before we call.
Is there anybody you can break it down by town the way you did in the previous article with the amendments for us?
So, is the question, what will each town, the full amount they will pay, the required amount, and the additional? I can see that.
So, right now, we have voted on Article twelve. In the amount of sixteen million three hundred and twenty-eight seven hundred and eighty-two thousand dollars be raised by local funds, correct?
Yes.
And above that, it's broken down by our cost-sharing formula between our three towns. And what the share is in each town with the proposed amendment. What would that share then come in each town?
Okay. Okay, so I'm gonna give you a bunch of information. Everybody? The proposed amendments increase expenses, just expenses, by nine point zero four percent. And after all of the revenue and income, it brings the total budget, it was previously seven point four eight percent. It's going to be eight point nine percent to the taxpayers. That requires twenty-four million seven hundred and fifty-five thousand five hundred and sixty dollars from every town. And that's broken down. Berwick will be responsible for nine million six hundred and sixty-nine thousand five hundred and twenty-two dollars. Lebanon will be seven million seven hundred and forty-eight thousand four hundred and ninety dollars.
Did you say that again? Sorry.
Yep, Lebanon. Next year, with this revised number, will be seven million seven forty-eight four ninety-nine zero. And North Berwick will be seven million three hundred and thirty-seven thousand five hundred and forty-eight. Now, that is for just the school budget. In addition, there are allocations for adult education, but those are what you see in your book. Those do not be changed.
Thank you. Alright. The...
Call the question.
I'm gonna ask for a vote, all in favor, please? Alright, sorry. So, this is the amendment. So, we're calling for a vote for, to amend the article. And let me just read it as it's going to be amended. And once we actually vote on the article, it'll be a written vote. So, Article thirteen. To see what some the district will raise and appropriate, and it's just local funds. So, now the recommended amount, or the amount, is eight million four hundred and twenty-six thousand seven hundred and seventy-eight. Correct, please? Which sees the state's essential programs and services allocation modeled by eight million four hundred and twenty-six thousand seven hundred and seventy-eight as required to fund the budget recommended by the school board. The school board recommends, no. I'm not sure. I'm not sure how we say this because it's not the school board's recommendation necessarily for this amount because the school board is recommending eight million one hundred and one. So, yeah. So, let's just deal with the, that amount, or what I've said so far. So, we're dealing with eight million four hundred and twenty-six thousand seven hundred and seventy-eight as the amended amount. And I'll call for a vote on that now, please. All in favor? Thank you, and opposed. Alright, motion passes. Sorry? This is thirteen, the amendment. Correct, because it's an amendment. Alright, so, we're in the discussion phase. Are there any more questions?
I have a question here, just, um... So, the total amounts that we have to raise for the community, states, thirty-seven million, and I'm just paraphrasing, it's thirty-seven million, and we're adding to it eight and a half million. But the actual budget that we're gonna be approving is forty-nine million. Can you just explain the gap?
So, the state is giving us... They are giving us the difference between the thirty-seven million and the sixteen million. They are giving us an additional one hundred and fifty thousand approximately because we belong to a regional service center. That total, those two total twenty-one million three forty-four seven eight. We have, so we have the twenty-one, three forty-four seven eight, which is what the district will, I mean, what the state will do. We have the required amount of sixteen, three twenty-eight seven eighty-two, which is what the towns must pay in order to receive the state money. We are, right now, trying to approve the amount over the thirty-seven million, which is eight million four twenty-six seven seventy-eight. We are using two million two hundred and ninety-three thousand one hundred and ten dollars in fund balance. And we are expecting nine hundred and thirty-three thousand four hundred and nineteen dollars in miscellaneous revenues. And the total of that is the new budget total, forty-nine million three hundred and twenty-six thousand seven hundred and ninety-seven dollars.
Any other discussion? Okay, discussion, please.
Yes, Deborah Wilson from Lebanon. I'm sorry, I am a school board member, but I have no idea who's speaking or asking questions. And I was just wondering when people on the board speak, if they would mind letting us know their name and what town they're from. Thank you.
Any other discussion? Alright, seeing none, will now have the written. So, each town should go to your respective clerk, clerk's update. clerk, clerk's update. So the, um, motion passes, or ready to out, uh, passed. In favor was one hundred ninety-one, opposed was twenty-seven. Alright, we'll move on. Article fourteen summarizes the proposed school budget. So we need to...
Ideally, somebody is willing to make a motion to...
Like to make a motion to amend the number to forty-five million. Bring up the point two dollars and seven hundred ninety-seven.
I think this is the amount, fifteen million?
Forty-nine million, three hundred twenty-six thousand, seven ninety-seven.
Twelve cents.
We'll find your toss.
Alright, you have a second. We're gonna vote, um, to, um, and let me read, uh, read the entire article with the amended amount. And so we're voting on the amendment when we do, when we do vote. To see what, this is Article fourteen, to see what some district will authorize the school board to expend for the fiscal year beginning July one, twenty twenty-four, and ending July thirty, twenty twenty-five, from the district's contribution to the total cost of funding public education, from kindergarten to grade twelve, as described in the Essential Programs and Services Funding Act, non-state funded school construction projects, additional local funds for school purposes under the main revised statutes titled twenty dash A, section fifteen, six ninety, unexpended balances, tuition receipts, state subsidies, and other receipts for the support of schools. So the, uh, amount is forty-nine million, three hundred twenty-six thousand, seven hundred ninety-seven dollars. So, um, any discussion?
Hi, my name is Robert Travers, the defendant. I'm gonna speak in opposition to this motion. So last year, our budget was forty-five million, two hundred thirty-seven thousand, eight hundred eighty-three dollars. With this amendment, we are looking at an increase of about four, little over four million dollars. So if we look at the bottom of the budget summary, our budget goes from seven point four eight percent. With this amendment, it will go up to eight and a half percent. According to a report from the U.S. Labor Department, our inflation went up, was three and a half percent. Our budget seems to go two and a, almost two and a half times our current inflation rate. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other discussion?
If I can move a vote?
So we've been asked to move a vote. All in favor? Sorry, and thank you Denise, Sarah, all of you. So this is to amend Article fourteen uh, for an amount of forty-nine million, three hundred twenty-six thousand, seven hundred ninety-seven dollars. So we're voting on the amendment, all in favor. Okay, and a vote. Motion passes. Alright, so that was the amendment. So now, we're voting on the article as amended. And again, the amount is forty-nine million, three hundred twenty-six thousand, seven hundred ninety-seven dollars. Do I hear a motion? And, alright, motion and second, thank you. Any discussion? Did they, did they have discussion, they wanted? Alright. Alright, seeing, uh, seeing no discussion, I'll call for a vote, all in favor, please? Alright, thank you, and a vote. Motion passes, thank you. Alright. Article fifteen raises and appropriates funds for the school nutrition program. Article fifteen, uh, to see if the district will raise and appropriate the zero dollars for the school nutrition program with authorization to expend any additional incidental or miscellaneous receipts in the interest and for the well-being of the school nutrition program. For a motion. Second, thank you. Um, or comment on the light zero?
It's self-re sustaining, how?
So, um, over the past few years, the school nutrition program has received, um, some assistance from local groups like Full Place, Full Potential to offset costs. They've had some ESR to offset costs. And the state has gone to the free, um, school lunch and breakfast for all students. So with those things and with, um, our current operating cost, we have a big fund balance. So in an effort to save taxpayers some money and to spend down some of that fund balance we need to spend, we are not asking for a dollar this year. We put a zero in to keep a placeholder.
Okay, so this is not that we're spending zero on nutrition, it's just that we're not asking for...
Any more discussion? Alright, I will call for a vote, all in favor, please? Alright, and a vote. Alright, thank you, motion passes. Article seventeen. Uh, sorry, sixteen. Article sixteen authorizes the adult education program raises the local share. To see, so Article sixteen says, to see if the district will appropriate two hundred ninety-three thousand, nine hundred eighty-one dollars for adult education and raise ninety thousand, two hundred sixty-five dollars as the local share, with authorization to expend any additional incidental or miscellaneous receipts in the interest and for the well-being of the adult education program. Do I hear a motion?
So?
A motion?
Second.
Second, thank you. Any discussion? Yes, please.
Hi, Deborah Wilson from Lebanon. There's been an ongoing discussion, uh, between myself and the people at NACD. Uh, we don't ever get any adult education in Lebanon. We get basket, meeting, and yoga. and yoga with goats, and that's not working for me. Um, sorry, but y'all know it's true. Uh, and, uh, we just keep asking for adult education classes and the answer keeps, uh, saying that they don't have the facilities, um, in Lebanon to offer some of the classes where they don't have, um, teachers, uh, adult education teachers willing to travel to Lebanon. But if we're paying, you know, like a large amount of money for, uh, adult education, I would, hopefully, that they could start locating some teachers that live in Lebanon or were willing to come to Lebanon for adult education.
Uh, no, we have some in Lebanon, we have sewing classes, we have quilting, um, some seasonal things, I can believe Jig Reeds and so forth at Christmas time, so there are classes, uh, in Lebanon.
So my question is, Kaylee, isn't the actual adult education, like TEDs and stuff like that, here at the high school? So like, because, oh, so is this for all, anything, community education for adults? But more specifically, isn't like, I think, what that lady's asking for, that kind of stuff happens for the entire district here at the high school?
And the other schools.
So there's something separate other than the adults at here at the high school, but like in North Burwick, but not in Lebanon?
The student academic portion is here at the high school. So there are, um, branches in Richmond and like in the other schools.
Yeah, because I remember community education, like through the, or like library or whatever, but so that the actual, like.
Academic.
Yeah, so is all here, okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? All right, seeing none, I'll call for a vote. All in favor, please? And a vote. Motion passes. All right, article seventeen authorizes expenditures of grants and other receipts. So specifically, or, um, article seventeen, in addition to amounts approved in the preceding articles, shall the school board be authorized to expend such other sums as may be received from federal or state grants or programs or other sources during the fiscal year for school and other program purposes, provided that such grants, programs, or other sources do not require the expenditure of other funds not previously appropriated.
So move.
Motion?
Second.
And a second, thank you. Any discussion? Seeing none, I'll call for a vote. All in favor? Thank you, and a vote. Motion passes. All right. So that, um, concludes our warrant articles. So do you have something to add?
Um, so if you are looking at your booklet, there is a sample ballot on the back, which is just a reminder that this is the first, um, this is the piece where we're looking at the, um, school revolving renovation fund, where we're looking for some funds to support the HVA systems and the upgrades throughout the district. So we definitely would like you to make sure that you take a peek at that. The other thing is, is reminder, this is a first step in a two-step process. Um, so last year at this meeting, we had sixty-seven people. So thank you for showing up tonight. Um, and honestly, I don't know that, I've, I've been sort of in this role for a long time and I've not seen this level of support from our towns yet. So I, I, I remember a few days back in the years of Polyandri and I, and there was maybe a hundred and fifty people in the room. This was fabulous, and we appreciate it in such, it's so much more than you'll ever know. It's really important for you to be here and to express your pluses and your minuses, it's all good. Um, so this is the first step in our process. On June eleventh, we need you to go to the, to the booth and vote. Um, it's really important for you to just keep expressing, you know, how you feel and what you want to do. Um, and the other piece is on that ballot, there will be that second piece about the SRRF funds. Um, we are able to utilize some funds that are supported through the state or any that will, um, be able to make some major renovations for some of our schools in terms of the HVA systems and that piece. It would be very helpful for us if we were able to pass that one, so there it is. Thank you very much, Jeff, thank you very much. And, do you have a question, Jeff?
Yeah, on that question on, on the, the SL.
Yep.
The first payment would be next year?
The first payment is actually. The first payment will be due a year after the project is complete. The project should be complete in September of twenty-five. So we are looking anywhere from fiscal twenty-six to fiscal twenty-seven for that first payment. And just in summary, uh, again, that bond will give us three point six million as free from the state toward this project. Two point six million will be a zero percent interest paid back over ten years. And about three hundred and fifty-six thousand will have to finance. But then those are great, that's a great statement. Great. You guys are the last people standing. Good job. Uh, think about it, this room is probably double the numbers that we're here tonight, so. Question?
Shall we work to North Burwick? I just want to thank everyone, all the board members, the administration, the volunteers, and everyone that came out to vote. Thank you all very much.
All right, uh, so just to add to what Sue said, this is part one, um, all the hard work that, um, you went into adding to the budget, now, now it needs to get passed. So you and all of your friends need to get out and, uh, make sure the budget gets passed. So. For a second, all in favor? Everybody want to head around? All right, motion passes, thank you.